Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 28th meeting of the New London Planning Board. Big agenda tonight, so we'll get started. Just a couple of quick notes. You are being recorded. We do that for for public records purposes and so that people can watch online. So just a disclosure there. We're going to skip the review of minutes for this meeting. Well, good. Okay. And then moving right along. Is there anything that anybody would like to talk about that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Well, then let's start with our first item. Which is the public hearing for the scenic road tree cutting. Location, sorry. Oh, yeah, with ever source, right? Camp Sunapee Road. Is this working? Okay. It's like karaoke night. All right. Well, first off, thank you for the extension due to the weather. Thank you for having us. Tonight I'm here to get permission from the town to do a new construction job on Camp Sunday, the Camp Sunapee Road. I believe it's address 113. Was just built. We put a new taller pole in. And it requires us to do a minimal amount of trimming. And also I went and inspected it today. And there's three rather large ash trees that have succumbed to emerald ash bor. That we're going to want to take out. Not only for the new construction, but for the safety of the lines and the reliability. The permissioning from the landowners has already been performed. So I'm just looking for a okay from the town to perform the work. And also none of the work will be performed until the road postings are lifted. So probably another. The way it's looking, two to three weeks, I'd say before the roads are posted, you know, the road postings go away. So I was looking for a vote on that. Answer any questions for the public or the town. And then I also wanted to mention in the minutes. Davis Hill Road did have some trimming performed on it, but it was trimmed during storm response. And I did inspect the road and found that there's no more trimming needed. It was actually taken care of during the storm response. So we're not going to have to have a scenic road hearing. For that, I do have a fair number of hazard trees marked on that road. And we had been stopped a few years ago due to a bald eagle nesting. Site close, you know, nearby at the lake. Like to know the towns take on it if you'd like us to proceed with. Going through those hazard trees, or if you'd like us to, you know, skip those trees. So I was looking for a thought on that. And if we're not going to cut the trees this year, which is perfectly fine, I will take all the ribbon down. So you guys don't have to see that ribbon up there for the next, you know, four years until the next trim cycle. And again, thank you for your time and I'm here to answer any questions public or the town.
Do you want me to just sort of, since we have an audience tonight that we don't usually have, some of you may not be familiar with what the scenic road procedure is all about. So we'll just sort of give you a Cliff Notes version. But for the handful of roads in town that we have designated as scenic roads, if the utility or the town needs to cut trees on the road, they need to go through the public hearing process. And so landowners can cut trees on scenic roads for the trees that they own, but whenever there is an outside party, there's a a hearing such as tonight. So that's what what we're doing. I think I could speak from the town. Employees side of things to the ones on Davis Hill. If you feel that they are hazard trees that, you know, are a vulnerability to the the infrastructure. Then, you know, perhaps that that warrants taking them down if there's no, you know, further environmental impact to, you know, nesting wildlife or something that you mentioned. I don't know what the board's thoughts on that are, but.
Good evening. Could you explain a little bit more about the bald eagle and the impact and whether it's still there and what's going on here? You spoke very quickly and there was a lot of information that you conveyed. So maybe you could repeat that.
Yeah, so I was trying to make sure I got it all in there, really in a quick session. So about, I believe it was about two years ago. We'd gone in there and profiled for hazard trees because we had had some trees fall on that road. So part of our response is we go out there and we check out the road for more hazards. We found that there was a fair amount of dead dying disease trees that needed to be, you know, taken care of. We were started the permissioning process and one of the large landowners on that road had said that they didn't want us to cut because there was a nesting pair of bald eagles nearby on the lake. And if we were to cut the trees down, it would disturb them and make them fledge the nest. So we agreed that we wouldn't do the work and then nothing really happened after that. And then I was checking out the road last week and noticed, oh, you know, all those trees are still there. They're all still marked. Notice that some trimming had occurred. So I looked into it and found out that was due to storm response early in the year around in January. And I was just seeing it now. So with the bald eagles, we don't want to disturb anything. I can certainly talk to the fishing game. And see about what their cycle is and everything and see if there is a certain time of the year that would be preferred to cut trees down. I'm guessing it would be in the winter time. And spring, summer and fall would probably not be preferred. But that's certainly something we can look into. Our problem. Anyone else on the board? Are there any questions or comments from the public on this?
So for the board's perspective, you would need to vote on the Camp Sunapee issue, which is the one that's actually on the docket tonight. And then we can provide some sort of informal weigh in on the previously approved trees at the public hearing back in the fall. So first.
So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve the tree cutting on Camp Sunapee Road.
My second.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe if you think that that it's unlikely that the trees should come down at this point in the year, I mean, maybe it makes sense, you know, ahead of next winter. That we just sort of reassess the situation at that point is that.
Yeah, I think maybe this fall, okay, what I'll do is I'll request another scenic road hearing, probably for, you know, dead winter, when we'd be actually taking them down. I probably still will unmark the trees right now, because I don't want you guys having to see the ribbon. It is on, I don't like the sight of it. You know, and there is, there is a fair amount of trees. So we'll unmark the trees this week. And then we'll go through the process. I'll ask for another scenic road hearing. You know, probably this fall. And then we can try to do the work. You know, at the end of this year or early next year. And that works fine for me. And I'm more than willing to stay by for like another half an hour for any questions the public might have, anything else? Anybody else wants to chime in? Got quite the audience here, so.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so now we will be moving on and we'll be continuing a public hearing for the final site plan review for Twin Pines Housing Trust and the Crescenti Trust.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Winter. I'm Executive Director at Twin Pines Housing Trust. Delighted to be here with you once again. With me, Aaron Lambert, our engineer. Matt Giffen, our architect. Ken Viscarello, our attorney, who is a resident here in New London. And David Krantle, who is our Director of Development and Communications at Twin Pines and also a New London resident. So when we were last before you, we went through our PowerPoint. I've brought the PowerPoint back. And I'm happy to kind of move forward through it fairly quickly. As to refresh the board's memory, as well as members of the public, for the benefit of the members of the public who may not have been here at some of the earlier hearings. We are seeking site plan approval and a lot line adjustment for a project that would provide for 60 units of workforce housing, of which 40 units would be one bedroom units and 20 bedrooms would be, or 20 units would be two bedroom units. And associated parking. And so I'm going to actually, at this point, kind of just turn it over to to Aaron to go through some of the changes that we have had to make that have been necessitated for variety of reasons. And I'm gonna leave it at that in terms of letting you introduce some of the issues that are coming up as we've worked through various approvals with sewer, water and traffic.
Thank you all very much. My name is Aaron Lambert with Will Cox and Barton. I'm this. Thank you. Is that any better? Thank you. Aaron Lambert, Will Cox and Barton. I'm the site civil engineer. So I'll keep the the comments about the project brief and just talk about the things that have changed that we've been working on since last we were here with you. So on the board, we do have all of the slides. So if anybody wants me to refer back to anything we presented before, we have all of the site plans available. But what we've been focusing on in the last few weeks is working through review comments on the utilities, specifically water and sewer. There were three outside third party reviews that were requested by the board, one of which is through Underwood for the sewer. Underwood Engineering. The second one was VHB was doing a third party review of the traffic memo that was prepared. And then the third will be the alteration of terrain permit, which has been submitted. Those comments are pending. And then we did apply for an application through the New London Springfield Water Precinct. They also use Underwood as their review engineer. So since we were last here, we went to the New London Springfield Water Precinct meeting and met with them. We did make a slight realignment of the water connection on County Road. It's an eight inch line that provides fire protection to the buildings. So we shifted that slightly to the north and that allows us to install that without disrupting service to the hospital. So that was something we worked closely with the water precinct and the hospital to ensure that that location worked for everybody. So you'll see on the plan and that's on the board, the blue line is the water. So it's showing fire protection to each building. On the other thing that was requested or required by the water precinct was for us to make a connection to an existing eight inch water line that runs, we call it cross country. It's in the woods. It connects from Fenwood down to, I believe it's is a Pine Hill Road. So that that provides redundancy. It provides a different, like multiple ways that water can feed in. And so there they requested that we seek an easement to extend our water line beyond the limit of our development to make a connection to that cross country line. So what that does is it provides redundancy, both for domestic and fire protection for everybody using the water system. So the plan that you're looking at does show a proposed 20 foot wide easement. It would require about 10 feet of clearing in order to install that water line and we would request a 20 foot easement. So we had the ability to maintain that. So there'll be an easement requested through the Fenwood property to connect to the main that they own. And then there would need to be a second smaller easement on the line. Part of our proposal is to do a lot line adjustment. So currently Twin Pines is not purchasing the 34 acres that are to the south. So there is a small section of that water line that would need to cross through that property and we would obtain an easement for that as well. So to be clear that the water line from County Road through the property to Fenwood would be owned and maintained by Twin Pines. One. Do you want me to talk about the water?
Yes.
So one of the things that's been in question is whether the precinct has available water supply to allow a connection. So we made our application. The project requires 12,000 gallons per day based on the prescribed daily use that we need to use. Based on historical use, we we recognize the project will use significantly less than that, but they need to have 12,000 gallons per day available in order for us to have a domestic water connection. Because the project has more than 1,000 feet of water, it's required to be reviewed by DES. And last Thursday, we received a letter from the water precinct. It was from DES to the water precinct. They forwarded to us that indicated that the 2022 survey, since I believe it's called the sanitary survey that they do, looks at how much water was used versus how much you're permitted. And they are over that amount and it looks like they're over that amount to the degree that we will not be allowed to until that is remedied. Make a connection to the water system for domestic water service. We did confirm that we will still be allowed to connect and provide fire suppression. So that's why the plan still shows the eight inch line to bring fire suppression sprinkler service to the buildings as well as to make this gridding connection to the main that's in on Fenwood Commons. So our our backup plan, if you will, is to site a well so that we could develop a public, a private water supply on our property. So you'll see on the plan, there's a big blue circle. What that is, is the required, they call it a sanitary protective radius. Each well that is permitted through DES has a prescribed protective radius that you need to own and control and not have things in it like certain hazardous materials or pavement and things of that nature. So we have done some preliminary review to at least confirm that we can fit the required 150 foot radius on our property or within easement from our butter to the south. So you're looking at that. There'll be a lot of other details we need to work out. There would be a pump house. There would be storage. There would be a generator. You know, those are all elements that will be required by New Hampshire DES. So that process would be forthcoming. We are hoping the board would be willing to grant us a conditional approval upon doing, performing that design and having that approval in hand prior to receiving our our building permits. That is a very typical process that that small community water supplies go through. And it would look at testing the water to determine what level of treatment is required. And and also how much storage is required depends on the the flow. So all of those things are things that we would design. There would be a professional engineer that would do all of that and then DES would certify it. A water supply of this size would be required to have what's called a an operator. So Twin Pines would have to subcontract with a water operator to do, you know, to check the the monthly flows, to do the requisite testing, to do the annual monitoring. All of this would be closely monitored and scrutinized by New Hampshire DES as a a small community water supply. So that is the update on water. We made a little bit of progress on sewer as well. If you remember back when we were before you with the preliminary plans, we were anticipating needing to install a sewer pump station in order to bring our sewer to the north, to a sewer manhole that is extremely shallow. We're pleased that we have been able to, in close collaboration with the hospital, arrive at a solution which allows us to make a gravity connection. So we've had a lot of discussions with the hospital as well as DPW. We understand that in the past, there have been some concerns about blockages in their sewer that I've spoken with the hospital facilities director and they are on top of and they've been working very closely to make sure that doesn't happen. It significantly impacts their operations. So it's very important to them as well as the DPW that the issue is is resolved and they stay on top of it. So we are looking to enter into an easement and and a maintenance and operation agreement with them, which would include things like the the regular, they're currently doing six month inspections. So we would arrive at a number that we thought was beneficial to all, especially in the first years of operation to make sure that our additional sewer wasn't negatively impacting that condition. So we would have a maintenance agreement with them. And if things like jetting the lines, you know, once a year is required, Twin Pines is prepared to enter into that legal and financial agreement with the hospital to ensure that that the sanitary sewer remains adequately available for both users. And so we made some minor tweaks to the layout to allow us to minimize our disturbance on the hospital property. I know there's been discussion about we'll need to have some kind of an easement or license permission to basically bring our private utility under County Road. And I know that our legal counsel has been speaking with Adam and we're happy to enter into that, you know, some kind of an agreement that allows us to install that that utility under the public right away and continue into perpetuity. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Do you want me to sort of give updates? Okay. So obviously the Twin Pines crew has been working very hard the last 24 to 48 hours to pivot to this development in the the water supply. And so from from our point as a planning board, that leaves a couple of things to to pay attention to. So we will need to see the the site plan that has the pump house and the the generator location and all of those sort of physical infrastructure components that were not planned for previously. And then also when we get to the point, assuming that there, when we get to a point where the board wishes to make a motion to approve, then there may be a condition that needs to be put on the the approval, just sort of governing the the review by the Department of Environmental Services. And so that, you know, as Andrew stated, that that's fairly typical. And so that that would be completed for the water supply system prior to the issuance of the building permit. So fairly standard language, nothing to you know, nothing particularly complex, just a a new component that would need to be a part of that. As Aaron mentioned, we received back the the sewer review from Underwood Engineers this morning. So we have been looking through that and I was able to meet with the Public Works Director this afternoon to go over it. The majority of the comments in there are of a technical nature, you know, the space and separation and those sorts of things. And myself and the Public Works Director felt like those are items that Aaron and her team and Underwood, our consultants can work out and come to agreements on and and work together to to figure out what the solution for some of those comments are. The one component, as Aaron mentioned, that we need to sort of get in the same room and and figure out is the easement situation, licensing situation, whatever that pans out to be from the town side of owning the the roadway and figuring out a way to provide that connection from the hospital side of County Road to the Twin Pine side of County Road. And so, you know, we'll have to take time over the next couple of days to get everyone, all of the interested parties together and and figure out what that looks like and and get that together. Additionally, we received back the the third party review from VHB of the traffic assessment. You know, and it's available on the website if anybody wants to read that as well. Overall, the our consultant felt like the the review that was done by Twin Pines consultant was adequate for a project of this size, which results in a peak of about 24 cars per hour. So, you know, an extra car every two minutes or so. And so they they reviewed that and felt like it was an adequate assessment. The only comments that they made were that there was some sightline concerns with existing vegetation locating between the rear of the Mountain View Shopping Plaza and the the subject property. Of course, most of that vegetation is not planned to stay with the site plan anyways. There's a landscape plan that will be implemented. But they suggested that we have a condition on approval for maintenance and perpetuity of those sightlines. Which I think is is certainly valid, but I also think that the town in the right of way of the road has the ability to trim anything that they think is necessary anyways. But I think it is always a good approach if we put a condition when that point comes. Alteration of terrain is is sort of outside of our purview. So we haven't. They have not completed their AOT yet.
Yeah, so that unfortunately, the AOT process is quite lengthy. We submitted the first week of February and I checked their website today and they are currently reviewing applications received on or before January 25th. So they will be getting to our application soon, but you can see it's a it's about a 60 to 70 days for them to get to it. So we're in the queue and and we're will be reviewed soon.
And the police and fire departments, we met yesterday with all of the department heads, but both were satisfied with the the plans as they are with the turning radius and and the various things that you've put into place to the slight change in the layout and the bus shelter, all concerns that they had brought up at times that that you've addressed. And so they were appreciative of that. And I think that's all the review of the department heads.
So from the board, are there comments or questions?
Help me to think through and understand, if you would, for my benefit, the board's benefit and also the people that are here. What the impact of the sewer connection and easement and private monitoring of the water system on the town in terms of monies that would be required? Is this net incremental expense for the town? How does this work?
So so the town would not be doing the inspections on their water system?
No, I understand that. But we would still need to, would DES be reviewing the monitoring?
Correct. So their third party reviewer, water monitor. Operator would be conducting, would be the overseer be conducting those tests and they have an obligation to submit those reports to DES for review.
What about the sewer connection and any modification to the street? Is there, I mean, what's going to happen in order for this to happen?
So anytime.
Is it more expensive for the town?
So anytime there's work in a public way, the the Public Works Department requires a permit for that and traditionally a bond. So while the work is happening, the property owner developer holds a bond to certify that they would pay to restore that public way in any public infrastructure to the preexisting condition. Should, you know, something happen along the way and and there be any damage to that. So there really shouldn't be a cost to the town for that connection.
Good. Thank you.
Yep. I will just put one caveat as far as the long term maintenance of that. I think that is something that that this you know, little sort of subgroup that needs to sit down the next couple of days, that will be part of those conversations and and figuring that out.
If I could just add to that, I mean, I think the assumption is that Twin Pines is the beneficiary of the the lateral line sewer line would be responsible for the long term maintenance of that portion from the property to the to the hospital manhole. Yes.
Thanks, Andrew. Anyone else on the board? Comments or questions?
I did note in one of the traffic studies, a comment about bike racks. And I know we discussed it at one point, but I didn't see them in the plans or I'm looking at the wrong plan.
Apologies, my bad. Yeah, top left. So if you if you look at the elevations, there are bike racks at each building.
Okay, thanks. One question I had for the the well radius, do you have to fence that or is there any sort of protection that that is required to be in place for that or?
It needs to be under the control of the applicant. So you'll notice I cited it so it doesn't have roadways and it's allowed to have buildings, but it wouldn't be allowed to have a road. And so we will have to ensure that that things that are not allowed in the sanitary protective radius are not there. And it's also cited to be a certain distance from things on other properties. So for example, there's, there are items on this, on the state of New Hampshire, DES has a site called One Stop and they have identified some things that are on the hospital property. And we have to make sure that we are, that our well is 500 feet from those things. So to answer your question, no, it won't be fenced in, but it will have to be, it will be obligated in the sense that we couldn't come back to you as the planning board and ask to put a parking lot where we're showing the pavilion without having implications on our approved public water supply.
Right now, the well radius is overlapping the, I guess, the proposed amended property line. How will it impact the other property? Just no development in that radius?
So we would not develop within that radius. I mean, and and just to clarify a point that that Aaron made earlier. We have an option for both parcels.
And so to be clear, there are things we can put in there, like we could put a house if it stayed outside of the town setback. But we couldn't put a parking lot or a road. So anything that we propose there, we would need to ensure that it complied with things that are allowed within that protective radius.
So if if in the future that lot were to be subdivided and sold, that well radius protective area travels with the other lot?
We would request at the time that Andrew is negotiating the easement for the water line, we would request that we also put an easement over the sanitary protective radius, which would preclude anyone from putting parking lots or other items that are not allowed.
Septic systems.
Correct. Exactly. Yes.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Yes. Have you done any hydraulic studies yet to say that that's where this wall is going to be? Or are you just guessing a spot right now?
No, we we literally got the letter at four o'clock on Thursday, so I have not procured any hydrologic studies. But that would be the the area that we would target for our our well. And what would happen in a case like this is if that well didn't have sufficient yield, we would add a second well. So there's a high likelihood it would, it would be in that vicinity. They're just, you know, we're They're just, you know, we're hoping you'd have one, but there could possibly be two.
Yeah, thank you.
Others from the board?
Um, just a question on the extension. Whatever you're calling it to burn to the Fernwood area. Fenwood, sorry. Could you explain, other than an alternative source of this water that you're not going to have now? What is there a benefit to anybody in the system? Or is this an obligation that's being?
So it is, it is an obligation, but it is an obligation with benefit. And in the sense that by creating a grid system, which this is intended to do, it allows for you know, adequate pressure at all times, it improves fire protection, it improves water quality. These are all benefits that would come from extending the line and tying in such that if there were ever a break on Pine Hill or in the Fenwood community, there would be adequate water pressure and fire protection maintained at all times. So that's the benefit. And, you know, we we went over with with the the Fire Department. I think, you know, Chief Lyons was 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 pleased to see that as well in our meetings with town town officials. But, you know, to be clear, it's it's, you know, this is a, this is a little bit of a tough one to be putting in a well and putting in an eight inch line. But again, you know, we think this project's a pretty important project and we think this is a good way to move this thing forward, particularly given the uncertainties at the precinct level.
I just a quick follow up on that. I'm assuming the main runs basically down Newport Road.
The main water line?
Yes.
There's a water line running down County Road. And there's also a line running down Newport Road and then to Fenwood. So there's a loop there now, particularly with this.
I assume that the water was coming up Newport Road. I don't know. From Little Something. But down county or down? Okay. Never mind. Let me, I mean, the question was if the main, someplace the main line broke, which is the normal way that it comes to you. Would the loop be sufficient to bring water to you? I mean, you've talked about Fenwood getting water, but.
I think so. I mean, the the benefit for us would be if something were to happen, it were. So we're, if we were just coming off a county road with a dead end service, you know, we're the end of that line, which isn't good for for fire flows. It isn't good for pressure and it isn't good for water quality. And if we were ever to lose County Road for whatever reason, they would be cut off. And so the benefit to us would be that we would be able to have water flowing in from the the west. And the way they explain the concept of gritting and just having a well connected and distributed water supply would be the same thing. So I believe Fenwood only has water coming from those two directions. And so they would like to again have everybody to have water coming from multiple directions in the event that they're shut off. And each time we add these two, we add a level of control for the water precinct. So when we make that water tap, we're going to put three gate valves in, which allows them to isolate in any direction they need to. The same thing will be happening on County Road. So I don't know if that answers your question, but it will certainly allow us to have water come from the other direction if something were to happen to County Road water supply.
That was actually my question, if it's, it doesn't just benefit Fenwood, it's gives a second source to you.
Yep, it benefits, it's a second source for us. It benefits Fenwood, it benefits Pine Hill Road. So it's an, it's an overall community benefit, but it definitely benefits us by providing redundancy.
Just back to the well and the interconnected systems. I made the assumption that the eight inch line was fire protection only, the well you're putting in is for domestic.
Correct.
So your domestic well is not actually feeding
No.
Your development and Fenwood.
It is only for the purposes of our 60 unit project. So so there'll be a two inch line, you know, to a storage tank from, and then two inch lines to all the buildings from a storage tank, such that we have, you know, 10, 12,000 gallons of water stored. And that is then fed through two inch lines to all the buildings. But again, it's only serving the 60 units here.
Okay.
So if you think about this plan, the blue lines, if we're connecting to domestic water, that would be the infrastructure and we would split it off outside of each building. So basically what I'm going to do is I'm going to delete that connection coming off. So everything about the design would stay the same for fire protection. As Andrew mentioned, we will have a pump house. I'm envisioning it being somewhere near where that that blue box is shown. And that would be where we would have our treatment, our pumps and our storage. And then from there, we would carry likely a two inch domestic line that went to each building. But it would only serve the these four buildings and then community building when that were brought online.
Okay, when you said pump house, I was assuming a fire pump, but I got it, two separate systems, thanks. I just was going to address one concern that was brought up at the last meeting and someone had asked about pursuing an easement for the potential to build a sidewalk down the road. Literally down the road and in the future. And so I just wanted to respond to that, that we don't, the town does not need an easement to be a part of this project to build a sidewalk. We have enough right of way there with the existing road that should the the town wish at some point to extend the sidewalk for that last 150 feet or so from where it ends to the the entrance of this development and connect to the hospital. So that the hospital pedestrians are not going through the parking lot to get to that last bit. We have enough right of way at as exists today. And in fact, the Public Works Director felt like we maybe even had more paved asphalt lane width there than we needed currently, so that it adding a sidewalk may not actually even increase the impervious area. Obviously, that requires engineering down the road if that gets, if that path is taken at some point. But just to respond to that comment at the last meeting, that they were pretty confident we have the ability no matter what.
Anyone else from the board? Okay, let's turn to the public. Are there questions? If you can, since we don't have a mic, just do we have?
Maybe Andrew, if you could just put that mic stand at the end and if folks would have questions could make their way to the front here and and use that microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, Andrew. And if you can just state your name so we have it for the minutes, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Steve Allenby and I live at 28 Lamson Lane in London. And first I want to thank Adam and the others for going through all of these fire drills for us as they all come up. Second, I really want to impress upon the board the importance of getting the conditional approval tonight. Time is of the essence and I would ask Andrew to maybe speak to that a little bit with respect to the financing that we make, we hope to qualify for.
Thanks, Steve. Yes, so this project is a project that we are hoping to bring to New Hampshire Housing for financing as part of their workforce housing program. And as part of that, they have asked us recently to accelerate applications. They're looking for applications the week of the week ending April 15th. So we are endeavoring to get our ducks in a row so that we can make an application. One of the things that will be, and we've, we've talked to Adam about is a site plan approval as part of that process. Will be, it's a competitive process to get funded. This project will be up against a number of other projects, which which will, and and all the projects that are being submitted will will have to have their site plan approvals in hand. So why does that matter? Because if we don't get funded this spring, and there's a bunch of things that are moving through the legislature that are important for this process as well. For those of you who may have read the Valley News this morning, they, the the upshot is that it probably delays the project for a year. So so the need for housing hasn't, isn't going away, it's not going to go away without project. So, you know, I I think without, you know, abdicating the the important work that you all are doing here or asking you to curtail the important work that you you were doing here and looking at this project, I just wanted to make you aware that that's the the timeframe that we're working under. It's it's sort of a one, one shot a year essentially to get a project in and and fund it. So last year was a little bit unusual. They did take multiple projects, but and multiple times, but right now the plan is one, one time this year. So if we get in April 15th, we would expect to hear in early June about the the funding availability, which would allow us to get into construction sometime in the fall.
And
Andrew, just having a conditional approval as sort of a subset of the approval, does that limit your ability to submit the site plan?
No, no, again, I mean, communities all the time will add conditions, whether that's satisfactory review of easement agreements, such as the one we're we're talking about here with the with the with the hospital easement agreements that might be required by the water precinct as part of its approval. So those are sort of normal conditions that are imposed as part of the the overall approval process. So that does not create a problem for us in terms of an application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously, you know, no inside this sort of wrench coming and I think we all thought we'd be in a different place tonight. But unfortunately, so there there are sort of aspects that are not completed yet that we, I think we could conditionally approve, like the the need for DES approval of the the wellhead and to iron out the the easement situation. Unfortunately, and I saw advice on this today, I don't think the, because the some of the physical components of the site plan, like the pump house are not actually on the plan yet. I'm not sure that we legally can provide a conditional approval. The site plan needs to include all of the the site. The compromise that I I think, you know, that Andrew and I had discussed is if folks are available next Tuesday night instead of waiting two weeks, you know, that we could try to, and I'm sure the rest of you have things you'd rather be doing on Tuesday nights than than coming back. But that that may be a way for us to take this next week, get everything ironed out and on plans and still, you know, allow 10 days or so in between the the approval and their deadline.
Thank you for for considering that possibility. And I, you know, appreciate the 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 willingness of of the board to consider such a arrangement on next Tuesday, if if you're willing to give it up again, thank you.
So I'd like to know, I'd like a list of precisely what is lacking and what it is that we're going to have to come up with between now and next Tuesday.
So ideally in that timeframe, we'd be able to iron out the easement situation so that that doesn't end up having to be a conditional aspect of approval. Of course, if we're not able to for some other reason, you know, that could go into the conditional bucket. But then really, it's just a matter of identifying the the exact infrastructure components that are required for this new water setup, like the generator. If there's any screening around the generator that's required or with desired, the the pump house and then the the well site. Of course, you know, as I think it was Joe that asked about the the hydrology behind this. If a month from now, it's determined that that's not the spot for the the well, then we simply have to amend a site plan, but at least we would have an approval with, you know, the best faith plan of of where it is intended to go and the components that will be required. If we had to open up another public hearing, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. It would, that approval would then just end up superseding this approval. But my expectations is really just those infrastructure components with that, Paul, or the pieces that we we have to have on the physical site plan before we can approve.
Are the data available to construct that conditional requirement?
Yes.
So and it wouldn't end up being conditional, Marion. They would, in the next few days, be able to to put that stuff on paper so that that would just be on the site plan. There may be other conditions you wish to to put on the approval, but but these components would be on the site plan.
Okay.
And unfortunately, in the conversations we had today, it was felt they were too major to to leave up to a conditional approval.
Adam, on that score, this this extension, are are we confident? Is it important to the site plan that we have that meets and bounds for that easement? Do we know that's going to be where it's going to be or?
Yeah, so from a timing perspective, we we know approximately where the existing water line is, but we were waiting for the snow to melt, which is doing rapidly in our favor to go out there and actually locate that and and have the surveyor gather those meets and bounds. So I would say we don't know exactly today, but because we don't have the surveyed location. We weren't able to get a plan from the water precinct to exactly where the water line exists. So we we won't be able to do that until we get out there and and survey that.
My question, with that answer, my question is more for Adam. Do we, what do we need?
So so it's fairly typical in any development that when you get into the actual construction and putting these lines in, that things come up during development and you realize there's ledge somewhere that you physically can't put the water line through. And so I think that that is a more typical obstacle faced with developments that I wouldn't be so concerned about. I mean, if it was egregiously different and and needed to go, you know, entirely somewhere else, maybe we would have to go back through the site plan process. But if the water line is able to stay within the easement, but maybe it's, you know, 10 feet to the left from what's identified as the path here, I don't think that that is an issue. It's it's fairly typical to post development to get a set of as built. And at that time, you you have to make a determination as to whether or not some of those choices that were made constitute going through another hearing and making sure that that it was all done appropriately and that there were no additional screenings or anything that needed to go in. Given that this is an underground utility, you know, there wouldn't be any noticeable difference in a foot or two, one way or the other.
And and just to put a fine point on that, I mean, if there were more than a foot or two, we would be coming back to you, Adam, to 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 meet out there with with folks from either the water precinct or in this case, or, you know, the DPW, if if we were having to move something on the other side of the property.
Are there other, thanks, Andrew, are there other comments from the public or questions? Yeah, please come forward if you don't mind to use the mic and just state your name up upfront here. Thanks.
My name is Judy Cooper. We live in town and I thank everyone for allowing us all to be here. I have a few questions and I apologize if they've been asked before and I didn't hear the answer. But Twin Pines is nonprofit organization, correct? From a tax standpoint? Nonprofits sometimes don't pay taxes.
And and I'm just gonna, while you you asked that question, would you like me to answer questions as as they're asked that way? Or directed through the chair?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay. So we, we are a nonprofit. We've been around since 1990. We have a 15 person board of directors. But we also pay somewhere between 550 and $750,000 this year in property taxes. So we had, we had talked about it at one of the earlier presentations, but this would be, even though it's owned by an affiliate of of Twin Pines, it would be paying property taxes.
Okay, for for property taxes at the current rate?
So it is, there is a statute. I'm happy to, you know, provide you with a copy of the statute, but it's a slightly discounted rate because, again, we don't charge the same rents. We're charging below market rents. So as part of that, there's a process under state law as as is common across the country for properties like this whereby taxes are assessed.
So there could be an impact to local taxpayers.
Did you say that again?
So there could, they are, what I thought I heard is they will be paying taxes at So there could, they are, what I thought I heard is they will be paying taxes at a discounted rate.
So we would be paying rates, a taxes pursuant to a state statute that governs this type of property.
So not the going rate the rest of us pay for property.
So it would be, I'm going to turn to my attorney behind me who, 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 who probably can cite the statute better than I can off the top of my head.
It's based on income and rent maximum rents that can be charged under the tax credit program. So it's, it's not done as much on the value of the buildings and the land as it is on the amount of income that the project generates. And for some people, it doesn't make sense to opt into it, but we won't probably know until we know what we're charging for, what we're going to be charging for rents.
Thank you. My second question is the wells, oh well. I hear sanitation in a pumping station for cleaning. How many dogs or pets are going to be allowed?
So we actually have a no pet policy. However, we abide by federal law and under federal law, folks who can ask for a, a reasonable accommodation under section five oh four. So somebody may come in and, and for, you know, whatever reason, may, may need a companion animal, in which case they may have a companion animal.
So is that the reason for the pumping and sanitation portion of this? Because dog waste is a very high level pollutant?
No, what the, so the well, the, the pump will be to extract the groundwater that will be used for drinking water. So that's what the pumps come in for. And, and what the, the DES refers to the protective radius that's required around a well. They call it the sanitary protective radius and there's things that are allowed in that radius and things that are not. So for example, a, a septic system or parking lots and driveways and roads are not allowed in there, but lawn and buildings and other things are in there. So.
Dogs with their dog poop, which are toxics will go possibly into the water.
Oh, absolutely. Cause if you think about a residential home that has a well, when, when a single family home is designed, you have to show where the well will be and those have a much smaller radius. It's probably seventy-five feet, not a hundred and fifty. That might be in one portion of your property and your septic systems in the other, but there's no preclusion from folks that have a residence from having dogs.
Thank you. The last one, and I, I, I will, I will stop. The bus hut, I think it was called, is new to me. So we're going to have public transportation coming in and out.
No, I, I wish that were the case. And I, but no, we, we put the bus kiosk in after conversations with the police department and the school district about the importance of, of having a place where if there are students who live here, and again, we're expecting a few students, not many, given that the majority of units are single, are, are one bedroom units. But we do expect that there'll be some, at least some children, and this would be a place that would allow them to safely wait out of the weather on a public way where the bus could stop and pick them up. So it's, that's the purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Others, questions, comments? Yeah, come on up. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Peter Nichols. I live at eighty-six Porcupine Ridge in New London. I am the chairman of the housing commission, but I'm only speaking individually. I, I'm impressed with the ability and the speed with which this development team has responded to a very challenging letter. And, and also the town, Adam and the staff have done an amazing job and it speaks to the professionalism that is being exercised here and it, it will lead eventually to a great success, I hope, but it's impressive and I, I speak as a retired developer. The greater concern I have though, from a housing perspective is the letter that was received on Thursday or whenever it was received, just recently, which basically says there is no more water for, for future housing projects. And the Twin Pines development is just one step in the workforce housing that we need in town. So my question is, how are we going to address this? How, how do we find solutions?
That, that's a valid question, Peter. You know, it's somewhat unique scenario where the water precinct is a, a separate entity that's outside of the, the town's government. So, you know, I think they are trying to identify their path forward and solutions right now too. So, you know, I don't think that we or they have, have the right answers tonight, but I think that they are, you know, working on it.
Thank you. That was a bit of a rhetorical question, but I just think it needs to be held in all our minds. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter. Someone else? Yeah, please come forward.
Emerson Colby and I live at thirty-three Highland Ridge. I spoke to you at an earlier meeting in January and I left you a document and I'm reading from that. And then in item number twenty, it says over time there are apt to be increased costs to current taxpayers relative to overall property upkeep, as it may be related to plowing, landscaping, lighting sidewalks. Part of my thunder was taken by the previous speaker. If New London is to expand, are we, and, and primarily this committee, are you prepared to expand with them? In other words, do you have enough water? Do you have enough sewage? Do you have enough land? If we have to build a substation for the fire department, who buys it? It's the land and the building and the trucks. What state laws govern this procedure and are you aware of them and would they interfere in any way in further expansion of New London in that direction? We already know that there is a place, a CCRC that is interested. And should the hospital expand? Has anyone talked to the Hitchcock, which owns part of that hospital and its program? I'm just curious to know that you as a board are thinking far enough ahead to allow us to expand down the road without a lot of taxpayer representation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments, questions? Okay. Anything else from the board? So I think the primary question is what are people's schedules like next week?
I can be available, Adam.
Okay. So we've got.
If we're doing it Tuesday evening.
And Tuesday evening is the easiest time as, as far to make sure we have Whipple Hall. If it needed to be an alternative time because we didn't have numbers, we could explore that, but Tuesday is easier to confirm right now. Same here. So everyone down here good for Tuesday, Tuesday? Andrew and folks, does Tuesday work for you guys?
Yeah, we're available on Tuesday.
Okay. So then what we would need from folks now is a, a motion to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, April fourth at six thirty PM at Whipple Hall. With the expectation that between now and then we finalize the, the site plan components and as many of the sort of outstanding potential conditional things that we need to.
So moved.
Second. Right. Okay. We've have moved in second and all in favor. Any opposed or abstained? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one other agenda item after, so just if folks want to leave, feel free, but we'll give you a minute. Yeah. Thanks everybody for coming. Got me to, yeah, okay. Oh yeah. Do you want to? We'll make sure the minutes are the right.
We're still here.
Sure. Yep.
Do you want to do that?
Sure. Yeah. So, so sort of formalities. Guys, we're going to jump back in here real quick. We just need one more motion. Do you want to make it, Jeremy? Just to continue the second part of that other second hearing for continuum. Or for Twin Pines, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to continue the annexation portion of their application to the next meeting on the fourth, fourth, next Tuesday at Whipple.
Second.
Thanks, Paul. Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Sure. Go ahead. No, no, this is your, you ushered. Good news to report for the planning board that we got word that all of our zoning amendments passed today, which is great. So. Thank you. Like seven. No. Well, apparently. I can tell you the number of absentee voters the day before the election was scheduled. If you had walked in the town office, you would not have been able to get in the front door. Because we, I think there was like a hundred and fifty people who showed up trying to vote a day early because they were afraid of the storm. So. So it's possible we had more absentee. But thank you all for voting and for all the hard work on those, on that. And I think Peter's probably gone, but yeah, that's too bad. I text, I sent him a text. Okay, great. Okay. Did you want to talk about? Sure. So we have one more conceptual that was not on the agenda as conceptuals can be informal, but I invited Charlie to join us tonight to go over a project that is one that is going to be an example of several of these kinds of projects around town that I wanted you guys to weigh in on. And I may give just a little bit of backup and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Charlie to sort of talk specifically about this, but there were changes at some point in the recent past to the fire code. And so our fire inspector is working his way around town to address the egress needs of different buildings that need second floor or third floor egress when they're not sprinkled. And so what this means is that the fire escapes that you may be familiar seeing around town that sort of hang vertically on buildings no longer meet the, the code requirement for the, the particular angle and steepness for how they have to come off the building more or less. And so, you know, it's one of those things that I think it'll take a long time for various places to sort of adapt to this. But the, the building owned by the Odd Fellows, which also houses the funeral home, has been meeting with Mike Mathie to identify the solution, which if you see up here, there's a, a sketch of what that solution looks like. And it's converting a, a window upstairs to a door that would go out onto a platform and then exit down the building to its parking lot there currently, right? So it would go right onto the asphalt. And it would be, I think it's thirty-six inches wide. And, and so my question that I'm looking for the input from the board is is this a material change enough that you wish to have these instances come through site plan review? You know, these property owners don't have a whole lot of choice. They're being told by, by the, the fire department that in order to comply with fire code, they must install them. They're relatively insignificant. Do you consider that a, a change to the layout of the building and the function of the building to constitute site plan? So Charlie, do you have anything you wanted to add to that or?
So. So, so the fire department will be involved actively in this process for each one of these changes.
Yes.
Okay. So then I'd ask myself, what's the value added that we're going to bring to this? You know, I mean, if, I, I would feel very confident if I fire department was going to go around to all of these buildings, work with the owners and design something like this or whatever is necessary for that building. Is that what they're going to do?
Yes. I would reserve the one potential issue for another building. It's not an issue with this one would be that if it were needing to be in the, the setbacks of the property. Obviously some of our buildings on Main Street are large buildings on very small lots. And they may not actually physically have the width to get it and stay out of the setbacks. In that case, I do think a variance would likely be required and maybe the only process required. But in this particular scenario, they've got twenty-one feet, I think it is to the property line.
Yeah, I don't think it's that much, but. Yeah, I don't think it's that much, but as you mentioned, the stairway itself is three feet wide away from the building. And there's a snowbank where the property pin is. I tried to measure today. I think we have, actually have about fifteen feet. This is on the backside of the building that butts up against the school parking lot, so we still have about twelve feet to play with.
So is a solution to this problem to be that that this function would be handled and managed by the fire department? And we, the planning board, would be available to them in certain cases and we could could clearly define whatever those cases are.
Correct. I mean, obviously, there could be unique circumstances on different buildings that may, you know, warrant further review. But I guess I'm looking for the directive on this particular one that we can then adapt to other buildings of a similar nature.
To to Paul's point, we would actually take a site plan review and pass it back out to the department heads, one of which would be the the fire department. So we would be looking to them anyway for their guidance. So it doesn't make sense that this would require a site plan review. But also, Adam, to your point, if it's in the setbacks, I still don't think that's us. That's them going to the zoning board for variance. Still wouldn't, in my mind, trigger a site plan review.
See, need to get in the way.
It's not changing occupancy. It's not changing parking.
Yeah, Paul.
I I'm just flashing back to a couple of instances that we've had. Where buildings were turned into residential and they were required to put a staircase, a fire, firecase. And neighbors complained about the orientation, the noise, you know, various things. If if we, if we're not involved, is there any notice that goes out that this is going to be done? The neighbors or?
No, no. If there was a scenario where there was a change of use so that it was now commercial, the change of use would trigger the the site plan review. As long as that change of use was over the thousand square feet, because we have that that portion built in, if it's under that, we can do that administratively. But the change of use itself would would warrant a public hearing and notice. In this scenario, the use isn't changing and it's not the store and the stairway is not intended to use to access the the second floor on a regular basis. It's purely for emergency egress.
My sole concern is neighbors see this. I'm thinking of some of them that have gone up there rather substantial. And sometimes they have a turn in them and things like that.
We don't have a choice in these anyway because of the code, you know, the regulation changing, so.
I understand. I'm just saying, we may find some neighbors that think that they should have a say on it. And I'm not, I'm not saying they should. I'm totally anticipating.
And just for reference, the previous styles of sort of the the kind of caged platform with the ladder, more or less. None of those have gone through site plan review. They're never attached to the ground, so they're not really a, you know, a structure. They're kind of just this thing hung on the side of the building, more of a fixture. But they've never gone through a process like this.
Yep. So we just need sort of direction from the board, right?
Right. And so I I think it does make sense to take a motion as to how you feel so that it's captured.
Does anyone else want to opine on this? My sense from, and just nod, I guess, is it doesn't seem like we need the the board to to weigh in every time here that if the fire department is going to handle it unless there's a specific case. Okay, so if that's what people are feeling, can we get a motion to that effect?
I move that the planning board does not need to approve fire department initiated egress changes.
Perfect, nicely done. We had a couple of people second. Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you.
So I guess then just make sure we note that the future meeting date on the bottom of the agenda is now wrong. We will meet April eleventh next.
April fourth.
Or April fourth, rather.
Next, at back at Whipple. So bonus round for people who are here for that.
And then for our April eleventh meeting, if folks could come with their summer calendar in mind, we need to tie down our dates for summer meetings. As you're aware, there will be construction happening in Mapple Hall this summer. So we will need to try to utilize this room from May through August or thereabouts. So we need to coordinate our meeting schedule with the SAU, which may mean that we have to adjust things because obviously they're being very gracious to let us use this. I don't believe they have conflicts on Tuesday nights typically, and the summer should be even better. Helps that we only meet once a month in the summer. But just if you could come prepared on the eleventh to get that tied down.
Please.
Two people. Their term ends this year, so I need to know, the selectmen need to know whether Joe and Jeremy wish to remain on the planning board. Okay, Joe, you you can think about it. You don't have to answer tonight. But just let me know at some point, okay? Because we'll have to reappoint you all or appoint somebody else. Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
All right, good.
Let the minute show that Joe wants to remain. Okay, great. Anybody? Nice try, Katie. Anybody else have anything? Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?